Let's get started and call to order the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of December 4th, 6:00 PM. Let's just start by welcoming a new planning commission member, John. Say your last name first.
Kalour.
Kalour? Okay, welcome. Not all of the commissioners are here right now. We're missing Lindsey and Dan should sign on in a little bit. He gave an email, but I'm saying that he'd be a little late. Okay, great, so we will have everyone in time. But how about we just go around, give a little introductions of ourselves, at least for John's sake, and then we'll wrap up with John and maybe Steve as a staff member before John. So I'm the chairperson. I've been on the commission for five years now, chair for a couple of years, two and a half years maybe, lived in Brattleboro, six years. My name's Tom Mosakowski. And I don't know, I like Brattleboro. I chose to move here, not for a job or anything, but just a place to live. And I liked what I thought the community had to offer, the location and other reasons, and have a house here and I rent some rooms and do a lot of house projects and volunteer on this and another depends, one or two town government positions. How about we go to Todd and then Lindsey?
Hi, nice to meet you, Todd Murkison. I sound weird because of an old ski accident, but you can't catch it if you see the person. And live downtown in Brattleboro, would love to try and help out where I can and welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lindsey. I just joined the planning commission a couple of months ago and I moved to Brattleboro about three years ago. Like Tom, I chose to move here. It wasn't job related or anything. And so, yeah. I'm also a member of Compassion at Brattleboro, which works in the town to see issues through the lens of compassion because Brattleboro is a member or signed on to the Charter for Compassion.
Okay, thank you Lindsey. Sarah?
Hey, everyone. Sarah Lang. I wasn't able to rename myself. Ridwig is a grassroots group that I help run up in Rockingham around Ingram Mall Development. So I like planning things. I've been in Brattleboro about six years now. I moved here for a job and last couple of months ago submitted Brattleboro for the strongest town contest and we won, which is great. They made a cute little video about our town. And yeah, I've been out for a couple of months because my son had heart surgery, but he's doing awesome. So decided to get back into, you know, regular boring life things.
Okay, Dan's not here. Oh, waiting room, Dan's in the waiting room.
Well, we'll have to ambush him, but it's a good sign.
Yeah. Dan, can you hear us? A microphone symbol. Hey, Dan, can you hear us? We're going around doing introductions for the new commissioner.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, you're up.
Oh, okay. I'm Dan Handy. I live in, well, I guess it goes without saying, I live in Brattleboro. Let's see, what's the nature of the introduction?
Keep it under 30 seconds.
Got it. Well, I think I'm there. Unless you want me to add my favorite whatever, I don't know.
All right, then.
I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Okay. And Steve?
Hey, folks, Steve Hayes, I'm the planning technician for the town of Brattleboro. I've been at that position for about two and a half years and moved to Brattleboro after grad school for the job.
Great. Okay, new commissioner, John.
Okay, I'll try to keep it under 30 seconds.
Well, new commissioners have to keep under one than that, yeah.
So John Kalour, professional experiences, technology management, venture capital with Intel Corporation, then left and started as a volunteer in the nonprofit sector, ultimately became a professional in the nonprofit sector, ran a couple of nonprofits, taught social entrepreneurship at Arizona State University, which is in Phoenix, and then obviously did some consulting as well as ultimately working with a product called Salesforce, which is a customer relationship management tool in the nonprofit sector. I moved here about 15 months ago and I moved here because my granddaughter is in Cambridge, Mass. And this seemed like a wonderful place to incentivize the kids to come up with my granddaughter and spend a lot of time with me outdoors. And they have, and I love it. It's absolutely beautiful here. So I joined the planning commission to connect and contribute to the community. I have worked on a similar function, if you will, in Phoenix, in my historic neighborhood. So I have a little bit of experience, not a ton, but I'm anxious and excited to get going.
Great, fantastic, thank you. Let's move on to reviewing and voting on, or what's it called, approving the minutes of November 6th meeting. Are there any concerns or comments or questions about those minutes? Any edits? I guess I will say too, that going back to the new introductions, I think Sue, you know, our planning, our staff, planning director of the planning services department, she may have given you a bit of an intro and some information, but...
And I've actually met Sue and Steve before. I took the walk around that we did about a year ago, remember? Which I found absolutely fascinating, was one of the things that got me really kind of interested particularly in the planning commission. So, and I choose Steve's ear off every so often. He's very courteous to me about it.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I hope you've seen that we have the E folder on Google Drive.
I have, I've been there, taking a look at it. Yeah, thank you. I mean, I still have obviously things to learn, but...
Yeah, right. And feel free to ask Sue, Steve, or myself, or other commissioners. And then there's those rules about open meeting law and whatnot.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th. This is Lindsey.
Thank you, Lindsey. Is there a second? I'll make the second. I think Todd was trying, but he was muted.
Yeah, abstaining wasn't here, so...
Okay, I guess I made it then. Okay, last chance for edits. Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand, keep it raised. Myself, Lindsey, Dan, don't know about Sarah, is it only the four people on the screen?
Am I allowed to vote since I wasn't present?
All right. I always forget about this. I think, what does Sue say? That even abstainers are allowed?
Yeah, if you think you've reviewed the meeting or been caught to speed, it seems...
Yeah, Todd or Sarah, have you reviewed?
Okay, great. Then I, I personally, yeah, I did.
Sarah and Todd as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's five of us, but minus John, I assume you're abstaining?
Yeah, I just wasn't part.
You weren't present, right.
If you need my vote, I can vote. Guys, in trust.
Yeah. Great, okay, moving on to announcements. You all will, or most of you will recall, I think, that the last meeting, us being an adjoining or abutting town of Dumerson and other towns, but with Dumerson, they are having, they were having a public hearing of their zoning amendments for several changes. That public hearing that moved to December 11th because they felt the need to drop the edits about food trucks. So I just felt, you know, to cross my Ts and dot my Is, I would mention that. And it's going to be December 11th at 7:00 PM, but basically it's the same thing from last meeting about that. I don't think there's information in this meeting's folder about it, but if you care to have more time to review that and potentially comment, at December 11th at 7:00 PM in Dumerson, then can look at November 4th's, 6th's background meeting materials for those proposed edits to their zoning amendments, besides food trucks. The other thing is that I just slipped into the E folder earlier today because it's not really an agenda item. The submission that I made to the state of Vermont's US Highway 5 Bicycle Corridor Survey, we talked about that last meeting and I just felt like I should put it to the record what I submitted. I think I did it pretty much in alignment with what I was hearing from everyone and my own thoughts. But there it is. And any, any other announcements before we move on to the agenda items of substance? Steve, anything? No?
I have something real quick.
Oh, great. Sarah?
It's not, I don't know, they sound super relevant. It is, but it isn't. Bellows Falls was selected as the next location for the Downtown and Historic Preservation Conference that the state in Preservation Trust put on every year. So that's coming up June 6th, so we're quite a ways out, but I feel like they hardly do those types of things in southern Vermont. So just throwing it out there to get on the calendars if people are interested. It's, you know, a 20-minute drive north, so it'll definitely be worth your time to go.
Sarah, could you say the name of the, the...
Conference?
Yeah, the conference, please.
Yeah, the Downtown and Historic Preservation Conference. It's put on by the State Department of Housing and Community Development and Preservation Trust Vermont.
Okay, maybe the DRC members should be made aware of that if they're not already. Steve, you staff that, right? Okay. That's the Design Review Committee that deals with historic. They advise the Development Review Board on development and the historic resource overlay district.
Excellent, thank you.
Lindsey?
Since I have a captive audience, this is quick and not really too related. We're going to be doing a cookie walk at Foodworks on December 21st at 10:00 AM. Everyone is welcome to come and get cookies and also contribute cookies if you are so inclined. So just want to invite everybody. It was really fun last year, so be happy to see any of you there and you might see me in costume, so that can always be fun.
All right, good. See, Sarah, these meetings aren't so dry. We're talking about cookies.
I didn't mean boring in like a negative way, I just meant more boring than heart surgery, okay? That's, that's a compliment.
That's valid.
Hope these cookies are good for our hearts. Anywho, moving on to the request for land use regulation amendment. This was, or maybe was spurred by a development application to the Development Review Board for a franchise of Valvoline Instant Oil Change to be put in on Putney Road. I think we're the current one stop.
That's correct.
Where the one-stop oil change stop and go is. But we have someone here representing them who will speak more to that. I just wonder what more context I should give. I think this is the first time we've seen something like this in the five years I've been on the commission. But other, I mean, where, where a proposed development meets kind of some intractability or like resistance from the rules or just a barrier where they can't do what they want to do in the land use regs, so then they come to the planning commission to try to persuade us to start the process of changing the rules, some element of the land use regs to, to make their development possible. Certainly when we were doing the changes to the land use regs and we're focusing on housing, you know, Winston Crowe spoke a bit about things, elements that would, would make their plans more possible. But as far as this one goes, you know, we just recently did a change to our land use regs, but Steve, maybe you could speak to the potential paths forward, were we to want to change something? You know, there's the interim bylaws, which we did during COVID, we're in for that anyway. Can you speak to that a little bit, some rough?
Sure. So at least in terms of what could potentially be the procedural pathway to, if such a thing were ultimately approved. If the planning commission were to affirmatively find that they wanted to recommend that to the select board, I think there, there is the need for the public hearing process that we went through for the last round of amendments. Typically, it would be the case that they would be worked on over time and then included in the, the next comprehensive process for amending the regulations that would actually encompass broader planning than, than just a single change. But like you mentioned, I think that there is also a pathway for a more, more immediate small change, but that still would require the two public hearings and then the select board hearing, as all substantial revisions that aren't just formatting and correction need. There is an alternative as well that can actually bypass this board in a, in a way, which is that if 5% of the voters of the town of Brattleboro or more sign on to a petition, it can be brought through the public hearing process by that trigger. And I don't believe that that sends it to a referendum Australian ballot. I think that that sends it to the public hearing process. It directs the planning commission, planning staff to begin that process.
Do we, are, so are the other commissioners still connected or did Zoom just get minimized?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great.
Okay. They dropped off on me for a second, but okay, great.
Okay, so there's those three paths, potential paths forward, were we to want to change this? Okay. And do you recall with, with the interim or emergency, whatever it was called, you know, bylaws or zoning bylaws enactment, is there like a restriction of the reasoning for that or the, you know, of why that can be done or can it be for anything within the land use regs?
I would have to consult statute and go back to you on that one, but, but that does remind me that part of the process, I think, in either case, if the board were to recommend that the change be made and then that process begins, or if the petition triggered that process, it's required in either case for the planning staff and planning commission to make a report of findings of whether the changes are in keeping with the town plan and other relevant planning documents that pertain to that. So it, it would need to have that done as well.
Right. Okay. Before, you know, in the, in the E folder, we have the submission from Boulder Engineering. And before we hear from their representative, I think Dan has, yeah, let's just talk any more about clarification questions or process or anything, you know, that should come before that. And I see Dan's hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Well, I guess, are we awaiting a presentation on the letter or can I refer to the letter already? Is that something I can ask either you or Steve to do or should we wait?
Well, Steve, yeah, do you, do you want to say more before we start delving into questions?
Yeah, I could, yeah. Just to make my, put my context of how we got to the spot.
Sure, Dan, he would like to, so.
That'd be great.
But Todd or Lindsey or Sarah or John, any clarification questions or anything about process before we hear from Steve?
I'm all set, thank you.
No, no, thank you.
I'm good.
Dan?
I should just say briefly that I'm also on the DRB, so I've seen a presentation of, of the proposal.
Okay. All right, let's hear from Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much. I'll keep my introduction to less than 30 seconds too, so I can get into the presentation. I'll be brief. Thank you very much for having me. My name's Steve Wilson, I'm with Boulder on behalf of Valvoline, who's looking to redevelop a property as was mentioned. So what got us to this point? So my client, Valvoline, is very interested in the current stop and go property. I've done many projects with this franchisee, very good corporate citizen, they don't cheap out or they take real pride in both the construction and operation of their facilities around New York and New England. And they're very excited about redeveloping the stop and go property with kind of their standard building, that gives you a sense of it.
Do you want to, oh, the camera's zoomed in, so I guess that's, you can leave it right there.
The work, thanks. So they're looking to redevelopment with this kind of facility, which you can tell, you know, it's not your typical oil change facility. They put a lot of thought and creativity in the design of the facility and the building. So as they started having discussions with the town and we made an initial presentation to the DRB on the project, and I mean, Dan, maybe speak to this, I'm too, but it was generally positively received and there were some things we were going to make changes to the site plan based on some DRB feedback and generally we thought all those could be achieved. The one sticking point, and we explored a couple of different options for this, was that the current code does not allow overhead doors to face the street. And we explored a few options on ways to deal with that and it just appears that things like variances or waivers associated with that kind of thing are not allowed by the DRB. Those things are only really limited to setback or dimensional requirements. So Valvoline would like to explore the possibility of amending the code. Texturally, it's a rather small amendment where the current code says vehicle service paid doors must be on the side or rear of the building. Proposed amendment essentially is limited to about eight words. Vehicle service paid doors must be on the side or rear of the building except locations where front-facing doors presently exist. So we're trying to capture that code to provide some vested rights as part of redevelopment of a site that has overhead doors facing the building. And why is overhead doors facing the street so important? I cannot stress enough that overhead doors facing the street are absolutely critical to a successful operation like a Valvoline or any service center where the customer one needs to be able to see the facility and recognize overhead doors, that that's, all right, that's a service spot, that's someplace where I can get my car fixed. But almost equally important is they're seeing that bays are empty or what the length of the line is on the building or getting service, so they can make a determination of, I'm going to stop or I'm going to just go on down the road to another place. And I think as mentioned in our submission, you know, there's a number of service centers and like facilities along that stretch of road that all have overhead doors facing the street. Valvoline does not, would not, and actually I don't think they can, based on franchisees' requirements, have, they can't invest, which they will be investing more than a million dollars in this property as part of this redevelopment, and provide a facility that's at a competitive disadvantage to other services, service type facilities along this corridors. It would just hurt their business and they just wouldn't make that kind of investment. And like I said, to put themselves at a competitive disadvantage, then the facility would stay basically as it is right now. So that's it in a kind of a quick summary way, I think. We thought there were some consistencies with the town plan, we thought it made sense, obviously, we were a little bit biased, but we're certainly willing to discuss maybe any more information the board might need to evaluate this potential amendment and find a way to potentially, you know, move the path forward. So like I said, Valvoline's very interested in the site, very excited about being part of the town of Brattleboro, and I think there could be a good benefit here, especially looking at the facility as it's at stake and what it could be if redeveloped. So, thank you.
Okay. And thank you for presenting. Let's go around with, well, first, Steve, is there a way you can minimize the boxes a little bit so that way everyone, or does it, can it, there only be four boxes on the screen?
I think it should allow for that.
I think it's as many boxes as the cameras.
Okay, so Sarah has her camera on.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, so commissioners, let's, you know, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question, actually.
Sure, John.
Do the DRB have a recommendation on this? Would they provide a recommendation? I mean, do they typically provide a recommendation? Do they have any feedback, relevant feedback or input?
I was in that meeting and Dan was as well and Steve was one of the staff members. I'm going to have to be jogging my memory right now about it. I think I recall the DRB, you know, that this, this was the main, as, as Mr. Wilson said, this was the one, you know, kind of, just, the one thing in the regs that just was a complete barrier. There wasn't, you know, as written, there's no wiggle room. And but as far as what the DRB recommended, I think they just, you know, they realized that that's not their position, that's the planning commission's position.
So would it be fair and accurate to say that the DRB supported the use of this property for this purpose, except for the fact that it was a clear violation of the zoning acts?
Well, there were questions about the parking, like the layout of the, like the impervious surface for parking and driving and like the front setback, I recall that.
Yeah.
And I think there may be some other questions, but I think the members didn't spend too much time on it because this was just such a clear obstruction to movement.
So straight up really, it was like, okay, there's no point in discussing this?
Yeah, somewhat, I think. That's my recollection, Steve or Dan.
It was, it was generally positive to basically delay the decision, I believe.
Yeah, there's a discussion about green space requirements, perhaps reducing the parking, all of which we can, I thought, building height needed to go up a little bit as well, based on your code. Everything else seemed to be generally, we, we thought we could meet and work with the board on providing, you know, design solutions to get through the process. It was just, like you said, it was this, so we kind of got stuck on it.
Right. Okay, Lindsey?
So I guess I just wanted to check that, so it's accurate that there is no other solution at this location that would allow for street-facing doors? Is that correct, Steve?
In terms of what's permissible by the neighborhood center, I don't recall if it's specifically under the building standards or the frontage standards. I think it actually might be sort of in both, but...
Building standards?
In terms of what is permitted, it's, it is the case that you can't directly face overhead doors or loading areas at the street.
Vehicle service paid doors.
Yes.
And there's no variance or other remedy available to them other than an amendment?
So they, they could revise, in theory, they could revise the site plan so that that's no longer the case, but as we heard, there's financial barriers to that. But in terms of what's allowable in the zoning, there, there are ways that that could be met in theory, but if, if the change to the zoning, in terms of flexibility to not apply that, it's not permissible by statute to allow waivers or variances for non-dimensional standards. So it would require a text amendment if it were the... So, so it would require a text amendment, uh, if, if it were the commission's choice to.
So you're saying we can't make a one-off exception?
And, and there's no grandfathering for redevelopment? Like, there's not, like, if it happens within a certain time period, you're allowed to do what was there before? Or do you have to, like, build on the same footprint for that to happen? Like, in past situations when I've, um, seen these types of issues arise, one way that there was a solution was if, for example, they built on the same footprint and the development occurred within 18 months. And then it was grandfathered in whatever was there before. And so, but that doesn't apply here. There isn't anything like that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, and so then, I think that sort of leads to my, my last question, which is, this is very specific. And I just wonder, would a broader look at the land use regulations dealing with this more general issue of redevelopment and grandfathering in existing conditions be more appropriate than having something so specific? Because I've seen Valvoline locations in other places. And I agree that the ones that I've seen are generally pleasant looking, considering what's happening there and it being mechanics and things like that. But I don't necessarily have the same faith that other, um, developers will do similar looking type establishments.
So you, you asked, maybe it was kind of just to think about, um, but if a more general look at the land use regs as far as, um, how we define redevelopment or grandfathering in and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, um, general area will also need us to take a look at statutes. I'm not sure what Vermont statute permits in terms of considering things to be vested in that way. If you can have that sort of, uh, um, existing conditions being, uh, given an exemption. Uh, I'm not sure to what extent that that's allowable. It may well be, but we'll need to take a look at that. I'll also make note that for the neighborhood center, this is impacting all three of those separate areas that are designated neighborhood center. So that would also include the area of neighborhood center by exit one, as well as the area of neighborhood center in, uh, West Rattleboro. But I believe the service center district also has, uh, virtually identical, if not identical, language on this subject. And that has not, uh, to my knowledge, been, been included in this. So I think taking a more, if it were going to be taken up, it would probably be worth considering doing it to both or either.
Right.
But of course, that's the.
Yeah, no, thank you for mentioning that. I mean, I, I feel similar that if, if we are to feel like we want to make changes here or, or, you know, look into it, that we shouldn't necessarily just limit it to the neighborhood center, but to maybe, you know, all the districts where, that have frontage on the main roads or where these sorts of developments may occur.
Could be wrong, but I thought in the service center district, it's allowed. It was only in the neighborhood commercial district, it's not.
Can pull up our language and take a look. You might be, be right on that.
Yeah, for the service center, vehicle service bay doors facing the street must be set back at least 120 feet from the front line. That would be, uh, otherwise the sentence before it is the same, that they should be facing the side or rear. But if it's facing front, it needs to be set back with 120.
So I suppose that adds a certain level of discretion, uh, as, as a second option to meet that standard, uh, if, if it can't be strictly and that doesn't exist in, in the neighborhood center, although it couldn't be an identical standard because that would exceed the, uh, maximum front setback.
Right, yeah, and the neighborhood center is, has a different purpose and goals than the service center does in general. Um, Dan, see your hand up.
Uh, yeah, hi, I have a quick question for Steve and then, uh, before you sit down, sir, and then, um, just a comment. So Steve, the logistics of, uh, sorry, Steve Wilson, right? Yeah. So the logistics of the business are not changing. They're, the cars will still flow toward the street, toward Putney Road.
That's right. Same orientation as the current facility, that's correct.
Mm-hmm. So as the current facility, yeah.
Yep.
And, and I appreciate in your letter, your discussion of the reasonableness of it, but I guess I, I, my comment, just for us to, I think, to consider, uh, is the intent of this standard with, uh, service bay doors. I think, and I, I guess I could be way off base here, but I think the idea or the intent behind the service bay door rule is that cars typically pull in with the exhaust pipe facing out toward the street. I think, and, uh, that's not the case here. So that's, that is a unique, uh, sort of logistical pattern or however you, what do you, whatever you call it, the way that the, 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 uh, service station flows. Right, it's different than other garages where they'll pull in with the exhaust facing out. And so, uh, you know, the, the, you know, I, I'm curious, Steve, I guess I'll follow up with another question, Steve Wilson. You know, as opposed to, I, I hear you on the reasonableness and the, the question about what, what we can do, but, is that something that, um, also to reiterate Lindsay's question, you know, is that something that was considered as far as the, the logistics of the, the flow of the facility or any sort of alternative of either canting the building slightly or anything to that effect? What, 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 what other options were considered keeping the same flow of, of the business? And if, if any at all?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand any options considered with the same flow of the business. Cause I'm, here's a photograph of the site.
Yep.
As it sits today, and if you, I, I don't think you can zoom in there, but you can see that the two through bays are the cars facing out towards the street. And then I guess they got the one, uh, inspection bay that's a dead end, so the cars drive straight in from the street. I'm not sure what you meant by what options, because we're going to go with the same configuration where you'd basically be seeing the front of the cars.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking is there might be some compromise where those two flowing toward the street could be, you know, something where we propose some, uh, some change, but that the one with the one, the, the one bay where cars flow in, there could be a reconfiguration where they go, where that does suit the current reg, where it goes in from the side. But, you know, I, I don't know if that's something you considered.
Yeah, that would, I would think bays going in different directions would, uh, just create some vehicle issues, safety, circulation, and, uh, I would require more asphalt than just having everybody flowing in the same direction, you know, this kind of counterclockwise rotation of the site where you come in on the right and you go through the building and out you go. So it's the most efficient, I guess, layout of the circulation within the site to have it that, that way.
And it is going, the building is going to, it, it's not going to be exactly the same footprint, is that correct?
Yeah, we're not, uh, our intent here was to further improve, um, I'll pull up the site plan. Yeah, this, uh, shows a proposed site plan where, uh, the current building is right here. So we were gonna kind of clean up, uh, and make a little bit more circulation by pulling the building towards the center. And I know some of the feedback from the board was, we could probably capture some more green space, uh, back over here, so we probably wouldn't have as much parking. So overall, we increase the green space on the property. And improve overall circulation by kind of separating, like, oil use from, uh, what is it? It's a rental center next door, which, you know, a little buffering between those two types of uses couldn't hurt.
I wonder if we, you know, the planning commission and staff maybe had, um, you know, a list of the auto care centers in town? Or, I mean, maybe the whole country, but we'll keep it to the, the town that don't have their auto service paid doors facing front. You said that in the, um, report, there's one out of the six that are in the neighborhood center. Don't face front, but as far as the 23 total, I wonder how many of those, you know, are on main roads as well and any of those don't face front? And then, you know, I, I don't think we're gonna, you know, do our own sort of financial business analysis and, and verify, you know, one way or the other, you know, the validity of what you're saying and, you know, how much are, are these ones that aren't facing forward, you know, viable financially versus ones that are? But, you know, maybe looking at some of these other ones that could, um, provide us and, and you, maybe some other options or give some.
Well, there's seven on Putney Road alone.
Yeah.
And all seven of those faces street.
Okay. Do you know where the?
And then there's, uh, there's Best Muffler, and then there's Havlin Service Station, which are kind of nearby too. Canal and Green Street, both those faces street.
Do you know which one or ones don't?
Off the top of my, that's, there's five out of six that's mentioned in the narrative, and off the top of my head, I can't remember where that sixth one is that doesn't face the street.
John, a question follows up on yours. It sounded like from the description in, uh, the amendment proposal, that potentially we will see a number of requests like this in the future because there are a number of, um, service centers with front facing bay doors that will need to have significant prepared, like I presume will be questioned to be upgraded. Is, is that correct?
I think, I think that's what the, the, Mr. Bowler Engineering was proposing, the, yeah, saying that a, a number of them are, you know, um, old and at least the assessor's documents say that they're, you know, that the quality is, is substandard, you know, for their age. And so if they're gonna continue with that business model.
And it could potentially be an impact if they finally simply can't keep the existing building up, have to come to us, we say,
Right.
you can't do it because that doesn't fit our zoning laws. And not to say that one answer or another is right, but we should probably understand the economic consequences of that, if you will.
Right.
Right? Will they go somewhere else? Will they simply try to keep the existing building standing, standing up? I don't have any idea certainly of that.
That was our intent to try to, we, we, we've had, we've floated a few different kind of edits to the code, and that's why we kind of said, excepting location where front facing doors presently exist. So we're kind of trying to split the uprights here where there wouldn't, the change wouldn't create the opportunity for kind of new overhead doors to come into the.
Front facing doors.
Exactly. It's just anybody that's currently there, they have some vested rights associated with those. So it doesn't, you know, it's just anybody that's there now, that's the most that would ever be facing the street.
But that does seem to be a large percentage of the existing facilities, right, that have front facing doors?
Well, like I said, all six on Putney Road have front facing doors, uh, yes. I can, I, I can tell you one fine implication of the whole thing. And I don't say this as a threat at all, I'm just saying, I guarantee you, my client will move off from this site if the overhead doors don't face the street. They just know the business so well, they've been doing these things so long. Financially, it wouldn't make sense for them to spend a million dollars here and have a substandard building design that puts them at a competitive disadvantage. They just, they drop the thing if, if the zoning doesn't perform, so that's, that's the, one of the implications, I guess, to say.
Lindsay? Lindsay, I see your hand.
And preserving some aspect of the facade to accommodate this change and have you not have to get a zoning change is not an option?
Oh, sorry, could you rephrase that?
So the facade of the current building has front facing doors. If you kept the facade with its front facing doors and made all your other changes around it and incorporated it, would that not solve the problem without having to wait for a zoning change?
So I guess, I guess I'm trying to play that through, that you would try to consider our plan, a renovation of the existing facility.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you say that no, that's not an option, then you can say no.
I don't know if that's an option, I just, uh, that, I guess I could rethink the site plan in that if the town would consider such a substantial change to the building, you know, currently has a flat roof, uh, you know, we're putting a gable on it with some dormer, I mean, the footprint might be slightly bigger, uh, I guess it all depends on how the town is willing to find renovation, so to speak. I would be happy to consider renovation. I guess we were kind of thinking too, that maybe it might be helpful to, again, pull the service center away from the existing retail space, but since there's no other path forward, we can explore trying to put the building back in its current footprint. If the town would consider that, not a change in use.
Well, currently, I don't think there's any way we're, as Steve said with that, you know, it's just, it's, it's under the, you know, like land development is defined as, right? And it's.
I think it would, um, I'd have to take a, a look and of course, um, you know, run it through Brian to, to understand if the major renovation events or require, uh, a sort of major project, uh, site plan review that would already require these things. Or if keeping the facade of the building, uh, and changing all kinds of other things and reviewing those things under the major project review, but not the part that's remaining the same. It, it seems implausible, but it also seems like there's possibly a reasonable interpretation that, that will allow for that.
I bet I can make, make the facade match, uh, in terms like its proximity to the street and matching up with the errant building and, you know, that kind of thing.
So maybe.
Like I said, the footprint's gotta be a little bit different.
But maybe after this meeting, that can be looked into.
I mean, part of the reason I mention is, is because even if we decide to move forward with zoning amendment change, that's going to take probably some time and, you know, if they would like to move forward more quickly, then having more options available to them is better than fewer options.
Appreciate the thought, yes, thank you.
Yeah, John, um, we have a term in Phoenix called one walling, which means that you leave one wall up and that satisfies the law. And then you can do anything else you want to with it. And this is not literally, yeah, this is not literally true, it's metaphorically the same, right? And my concern is two things. One, um, obviously if it even fits the, the legal responsibilities, is you create all sorts of bastardization as other people, obviously, will do exactly the same thing to avoid the amendment. And I'm presuming based on, um, based on the, the write-up, that we're gonna be seeing more of these coming down in the future as these buildings age out. So personally, I believe that we're just kicking the can down the road if we don't address it holistically. Does that make sense? Or, or without the legitimate reason for making, if you will, a variance. In other words, it's a drive-through from the back instead of tailpipe to the front or whatever, you know, that means, but that's legitimate. That's a legitimate reason for an amendment change, not, okay, if you keep the facade the same, if you will. I just, I personally have a very bad experience with one walling. one walling.
Yeah, the thought that I have is, you know, we definitely have goals with these different zoning districts and ways we want to steer development. And, you know, you've quoted the purpose statement and whatnot in here. But then we also have a list of uses that we allow in the districts. And if it's presumably just not financially feasible because of some of our restrictions, our regulations, to actually implement some of these uses, then, you know, we should check our idealism in some cases and, you know, and come to terms with reality.
And it may be somewhat of an ancillary issue, but as you see these future ones coming forward, you know. And another kind of secondary issue to think about is, you know, right now, everything they're doing there is legal, but it's grandfathered in in terms of how they store their oil and how they process it and handle it. Whereas a new facility is under much stricter regulations on how they contain their oil and how they handle it. Right now, because it's grandfathered in, they're basically storing oil at grade and there's really no secondary containment if there's ever a problem. And we have the river kind of right behind us. Conversely, a new Valvoline, all the oil goes to basically the basement where it's collected and stored until it's pumped out. So renovating these places gives the opportunity to bring them in compliance with current regulations for those, you know, providing secondary containment for oils and all the fluids from the vehicles, which is going to continue to operate totally legal and it's absolutely compliant because it is grandfathered. But is a thing to consider, you know, and offers that benefit of if you renovate them.
To your point, it's better than just the way the bay fix is.
Yes. Yeah, exactly. If you don't Valvoline, you drive in, you sit in your car, the service section isn't basically in a grade below you, working underneath your car and collects all the oil down there. So there's no chance for spillage or leakages out into the parking lot or wherever.
Well, I think we have, I have a list of a few things that, you know, more materials and things we can look into and I hope staff will help out with. And maybe we'll ask in the interim, Boiler Engineering to provide more.
What can I, I know staff's busy and they're somewhat constrained with resources. If there's stuff we can collect or information that we could help you.
Well, like we were saying, and, you know, Lindsay was bringing up a couple of times with any sort of like wiggle room there may be with, you know, how, how we look at and enforce and interpret like grandfathering and redevelopment versus renovation and such and, and what's required site, major site plan review. I think, I think you'll just maybe hear from, from staff after they, and, you know, maybe I and them talk about it. You know, and review the language a bit more and just see if like, no, actually, you know, the way we originally thought of it is just, we agree set in stone, or actually maybe there's different, you know, reasonable ways to interpret it. And then also I think, you know, looking at some of the other ones in town that don't face front, you know, at least I personally like to just have a lot of information. So even though I totally hear you that, you know, with your business model, it's just not financially possible if you're not going to have front service-based doors facing front, still I want to, you know, and I could have gone around town before this meeting and done that, but shame on me, I didn't. But, you know, in the interim, but, you know, this also isn't, there's some other government boards maybe where, you know, you apply and you have at the meeting and maybe you expect a decision to be made and then changes to happen like at that meeting. But we do things a bit slower here. And I'm not, but, you know, I think there may be some planning boards in some other communities that like, they have all the power for the land use regs there at the meeting and, you know, in some other states, I'm not sure. But regardless, it's not, the DRB is the other side of the coin from legislative. They're more judicial, but they make, you know, decisions often than they're at the time with the applicant coming and presenting. But we have on purpose, you know, kind of a more methodical, patient approach. So.
I totally understand and I managed my expectations coming here. I wasn't expecting some, you know, all be wrapped up in a bow tight. As long as we have the conversation and keep things moving forward. Yeah, like I said, my client's looking to, you know, if possible, you know, as soon as break around, as soon as spring rolls around. But, I mean, we'll see how things go and what happens and, you know. So appreciate the insight, good comments, and I appreciate the thought and maybe even the suggestions on how this is another path forward. So.
Okay. But is there anything else from commissioners before we wrap this up for this meeting?
I, Tom, I like the, just a sample size, just a little more info because I feel pretty ignorant to about just how it works with, you know, flow and green space. So I'd love to just, you know, get more info for sure.
Okay. All right. So, you know, we'll try to have a revisit of this at the next meeting. Okay.
First Mondays of the month, typically? I think the first Monday of the month is the first, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Have a great holiday. Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item. Considering the historic overlay district and historic preservation, at the last meeting, the design review committee came in and presented on, well, there's this program called the, in the state of Vermont, maybe it's other states too, called the certified local government. And you know about that?
Only what I've learned in brief conversations.
Okay. And so.
It's federal.
Oh, it's federal. Okay. And that, if municipalities do certain things like create a historic preservation committee and do certain reports and surveys about historic resources in their community, then, you know, and fill out certain applications to the state and the feds, then they have access to certain administrative support and grants and other, other resources to help further historical preservation and knowledge for their community. It doesn't necessarily, I don't think it comes with any itself. It doesn't come with any regulations or enforcement itself.
Is that what the purpose of this agenda item is? I was, I was a bit unclear reading through.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I was going to actually ask Steve if he could explain what planning wants to get out of this.
Yeah, I'll just add, oh, yeah. I mean, part of it is that, you know, we've been, there's been requests from the designer review committee and then also over time, like recognition from various people and myself and maybe other commissioners that like our current historic resource overlay district maybe isn't, could be improved, maybe isn't, um, yeah, could be improved.
Also, Steve was here last meeting for the discussion of an HRC, right? Historical review committee? Was that a tag?
Historic preservation committee.
Oh, sorry. I think you review of course, but.
Yeah. So there's been talk about furthering the certified local government program. And we currently have a little section in our land use regs about demolition and when that's allowed. And, you know, you need a permit for it, but there's more restrictions if it's in the, in the historic resource overlay. The design review committee who came last month had a proposal for really filling out and making more methodical demolition regulations where it would go before like a review body. And, yeah.
So it was also though, didn't Sue also mention, excuse me, Steve, if I'm wrong on this, didn't Sue also mention another form, another process, design? Help me out.
Right, there's, go ahead, Steve. Yeah, I'm not explaining this very well, so.
I'm not trying to derail the conversation. In fact, I'm just trying to clarify for me what you want from, from me as a commissioner, from this discussion.
Right. Well, I'll just say, and then I'll let Steve take over because he's very thorough and clear with his explanations usually, is that this agenda item is to try to see how to move forward, actually. Yeah.
Okay.
Because.
We can help as we go along, guy.
Yeah, in general. But Steve, you want to add some clarification?
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the, one of the things that Sue brought in, in the memo, which might have resolved itself earlier, if I recall the communication earlier today on that point of clarity, there is within state statute, I want to say it's 24 VSA 4414 something, there are two separate ways that you can create essentially a historic district. One of them is called a historic district and one of them is called a design review district or a design district. But they are provided for in statutes, two separate things. They seem to have almost entirely overlapping purposes, but there are a few extra things that a design review district would seem to have.
Yeah, the local historic district has more.
Oh, in terms of.
Oh, in terms of the purpose and reasons.
Yeah, flexibility and what you can really like do with it and what you can do it for is more broad. Yeah. But then the specificity and the requirements that need to be met for the historic district are definitely higher. And then, yeah, I think that the purpose of this conversation is definitely a very high level values based. What do we actually want out of historic preservation, if we wanted it all? What is the, what is the best way of achieving that goal is what we have doing that? How good to have better, et cetera.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, those emails I had with Sue, in addition to the design review district or a local historic district, there's also overlay districts. And those can be formed for all sorts of purposes like flood plain or airports. And historic preservation is also another way. So quite literally, the historic resource overlay that we have currently is not a design review district or a local historic district or a hybrid of the two. It maybe borrows language from those, but it is just an overlay district, which itself, from what I saw in statute, doesn't really have much requirements filled out. So it's a pretty broad thing. And, you know, this was implemented in 2015 in Brattleboro in the 2015 revision of the land use regs. Yeah, so there's been talk about, you know, we have four, currently the historic resource overlay district just piggybacks off of the national register of historic places designation of districts. And we have four of those in Brattleboro. We also have locations and buildings outside of those that are on the national register. But it's just the four districts that are recognized in that overlay. And then we attach restrictions, regulations, enforcement to that. But in order to join the certified local government program, the administrator of that at the state level wants those things to be decoupled. They don't want municipality, the person doesn't want municipalities to just, they don't want the national register of historic places districts to feel to people like they always come with restrictions and regulations. So if we were to go that route with this certified local government program, we'd have to not just have the HRO defined as whatever is a national register historic place district.
Is that then the purpose of this agenda item is what do we need to do to qualify for the certified local government program?
Yeah, no, I guess even higher level than that.
And that could be one of the.
It could be part of it, yeah.
Values-based outcomes.
Yeah, I mean, so Sue, Sue, I think did a good job in this memo of having these discussion questions. But I wonder if before we go into that, if I can provide any more background, you know, there's certainly the, in the E folder, the, some past memos that were provided in the subfolder. What else can be said? I mean, you know, the town plan does have a section, a chapter about historic resources and scenic resources. And, you know, presumably ostensibly legally, the town plan is what the community wants. So if we were to say like, oh, let's just get rid of all this, like, I don't think that's, even if we wanted to, I don't think that's something we should do because the community ostensibly wants it. However, my personal feeling, and I've said this before at meetings, is like, and I live in one of these districts, full disclaimer, but I feel like the value in the one I live in, the Clark Canal Historic District, is, you know, the buildings themselves, I don't think really have much architectural significance or quality or things that the public and community members or tourists love to walk through and be like, this is amazing. I'm glad this is preserved. What I think is valuable is just like, kind of the modesty and the density and the small places, the small parcels, and the closeness of the buildings and the narrow streets. And, but the town plan definitely speaks to, like when there was a West Brattleboro Village master plan done, it says in the town plan that that was preservation of the, the village center green and the buildings right around it was a top value of, of, of the community, of the people in West Brattleboro. And it's clear to me, and there's, you know, a whole subsection in that historic chapter of our town plan about the downtown historic district and how that has value being, you know, preserved as it looks to some degree. But as far as like, you know, these two low-income or working class predominantly residential neighborhoods off of, mostly off of like main roads, the Clark Canal Historic District and Horton Homestead, they're just mentioned in the town plan. But they, they're not defended really with any rationale or, you know, that the community cares about them.
So when I, I lived in a historic district in Phoenix and it made very clear sense because there were perhaps 200 homes that were built before North Row One in Phoenix. And the rest of it was, you know, this horrific tract home, right? So this was very clear to me what a historic district was. When I come to Brattleboro, everything's a historical, right? Maybe some are older than others and all the rest, but the notion of what historic meant no longer had the same meaning to me.
Right.
So I was really interested actually in Sue's comment about the design review district because that would give, and again, not advocating, I'm simply still asking questions to try to understand, that would provide more flexibility to save spots that we want to treasure that aren't necessarily directly related to old.
Right.
Right? Beautiful view of the river or, you know, homes that uniquely, the Etsy area, for example, which may or may not already be one, but the point being that it was built for a specific purpose and is important because of that. Am I, am I at least getting closer to what you want to get out of this agenda item?
Well, you know, there's things I want and then there's, what I just, I want to see what the commission wants. Yeah.
Why are we spending time on it really?
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, I mean, this is a tough one for me. I mean, we could go the design review district route and add to our land use regs, you know, preserving some, some farmy, rural hillside, you know, in southwest Brattleboro.
It's a very important part of the.
Yeah, and all sorts of different things.
The foreign environment.
Or if we want to keep the conversation just to historic, then maybe we could say, you know, preservation, then we could, this is one thought I had, you know, the three members of the design review committee seemed, well, at least two or three of them were very willing to be on this new thing that they were proposing to create, the historic preservation committee. And I looked through the, you know, the states or the feds boilerplate language for an ordinance to create that or certified local government or both. And it gives them the power to do a lot of the work of rationalizing local historic districts. And they don't create them, but they would come to us, you know, and then the select board has ultimate authority to actually implement these. So in some ways, like, we don't necessarily, if we're finding this topic difficult and we're not, you know, history. So in some ways, like, we don't necessarily, if we're finding this topic difficult and we're not, you know, history experts. We can, we can just recommend that this new committee get created and let them do a lot of the work.
We do have to, and by the way, we're demonstrating why it's a disadvantage to work remotely. Are there people on the Zoom that want to?
Yeah, well, I don't see their hands up. I've looked over a couple of times, but I'll certainly give them the, yeah.
I love to talk, so that's not a problem. So does that mean though, we should give them some guidelines that says, listen, you've not just limited to so many years and, you know, blah, 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 blah. You can also look what for what the guidelines for the design review district would be, right?
I don't think that they would be focusing on the design.
So that's not very true.
Yeah, they would just be focusing on the local historic districts.
Okay.
And and just other other historic information and surveys and resources and individual properties that are outside of.
Does that mean whatever solution we come up with should be limited simply back to the historic stuff? Or should we expand the solution? Sorry, expand the the boundaries and find another solution for who's going to look at things like. Farmland, you know, traditional small farms, for example.
Yeah. I mean, we certainly.
I'll ask you questions.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could. But I feel like we should keep this just to historic considerations right now. And keep in our in our minds that there are that there is this thing called the design review district and overlay districts. And that they can. They can both overlay our current zoning districts for for different themes.
So the boundary of the discussion then is the historic, local historic districts. And some direction for the people who volunteered to help manage this, is that?
But even before that, do, you know, they came last meeting with, it's the select board that was passed the ordinance, but they were looking to us. To give, they were hoping from us, I think, well, also just a bouncy idea on on a government body first. But also looking to us to maybe recommend to the select board. That 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 committee be created and the certified local government program proceed. I think. I think I'd like to run through some of Sue's questions in this memo. Okay, let's go with Dan first.
Yeah, that that's exactly what I was going to suggest, but I guess I'll I'll I could start with. Actually, I'm I'm looking at Steve's memo. From October second, the one with the map on the second page. And Steve, I wonder if you could pull that up if possible, because then that would give us a little bit of. Concrete, something to look at anyway, but. You know, I I do think all this points toward supporting the design review committee for the basic idea that we're what we're really talking about is either. And that this is on page six of the memo, Steve. But it no rush if you have a minute there. So. The idea of establishing or disestablishing design districts or establishing or disestablishing historic districts is basically what we're talking about. Someone needs to be focused on that, right? And I don't, as I think, Tom, I think as you're basically getting at, we're. None of us are, I don't think any of us are historic preservationists or whatnot, right? So so we really, I think we do need the. The somehow to support the. Implementation of someone to to rationally discuss what, you know, what these districts are. And I I mean, I think as Steve points out also, there's. There hasn't been any discussion of this for eight years. It was put in place eight years ago. There you go. But some, you know, we're we're probably not going to have the time to really suss out what what all the details are. But if we had a design review committee, I I think as what they are. Proposing to do, then they could do that. They could be.
Preservation committee, yeah.
So testing my. Testing my understanding of the of our discussion, the answer to the first question is we do want to have local historic districts. Correct? And again, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, what I thought I heard you and Dan say is that we will have local historic districts.
We have them already.
Well, currently, currently, we have.
Yeah, I think Sue's point, though, is that they're really just design review districts, correct?
Well, so so her and I emailed a bit after this and and we came to the the mutual understanding that. What we currently have is a third thing, an overlay district.
Okay.
And it is right in the name, an overlay district. But but in that section in our land use regs, it like borrows some of the language from the local historic districts. But.
So what would your answer be to the first question?
Yeah, my personal answer, I think if we move forward, and since with the certified local government program, if we go that route. And we'd have to decouple our our regulations from being attached to the, you know, the the four. Being attached by definition to the the four National Register of Historic Place districts. Well, I forget, I forget if the if the C L G program actually requires any local historic districts to to be in existence.
I don't believe so.
I don't think it does, but it allows the historic preservation committee to look into them and recommend them. But anyway, but my answer would be that. You know, the the statute for the local historic districts, which has been provided in a memo or two in the past from staff. I've skimmed through it. I don't know if every single one of those lines maybe is is perfect and best for Brattleboro. But in general, it seems like. What what we've more or less mirrored in our H R O and it seems like the proper thing for. To me, for the West Brattleboro Village Green and for the downtown. But as far as the two other districts. I am on the fence about that. I don't think so.
Okay, so those would become local historic. Districts, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And we would continue with the process of using the local historic district rather than using. The design review district, if you will. And the reason I keep bringing it up is because it's right in the first question, right?
Yeah.
Is that, am I?
Well, it's.
Is this what Sue wanted wanted us to talk about, Steve?
So. What it seems like is that. We we came to the understanding after this was written that. Essentially, we should be reading the first question as knowing that our historic resource district is actually an overlay district. How do you feel about that there would be benefit to having local historic districts? And as I understand it, if we were to have local historic districts. It would be in lieu of the way that they are currently done in the overlay. I believe that would essentially make them a zoning district in effect with its own specific. Dimensional standards. In in that way, or at least I think that's something that could be done so so that that would be directly tied to the historic pattern.
So conceptually, then the overlay districts would become historic districts and we would do whatever is necessary to make that transition work. Is that correct?
I think we would just end up basically adding each one that we decided were. Something we wanted to actually see via historic districts. So as as Tom said, for example, if the downtown and the West Village Center were to become local historic districts. We would add those two as local historic districts into the land use regulations. And then perhaps the other two would become design review districts. If I believe that would allow for a more form-based code type approach where. A more general. Sense of the.
Okay, so you would have other districts as well then?
Possibly, or they would not be taken up as either. It's it's entirely possible that those could be not continued as historic districts. I believe it's it's not clear to me to what extent. The existing town plan is particularly specific that that those districts were. Of a substantial priority. I think it would probably require some level of consulting with the public to make sure that it was not objected to for those to change to. Not via historic district anymore, if that were the way that this commission were going. But I do believe that it is possible to consider not having them be protected in that way.
So so if I understand right then, it sounds like there's a couple of desired goals from from this broader discussion. One, it sounds like the making us C L G compliant is important to the extent possible. Is that correct?
I I do think that's referenced as a goal of the.
Okay, so so C L G compliant is one goal. The second goal is that we will have a clear understanding of when something is a local historic district. And when something is a design review district, correct? And that will be clear and all of the districts that are in overlay now will fall into one of those two categories.
Or the third option, which is status quo, which is the overlay district method, which, you know, is seemingly statutorily valid. Has, you know, potential benefits, trade offs. To, I guess, correct myself at more context to. I think that the actual line, if I'm remembering it from the town plan, is to consider the C L G. Membership for the town. So that's pretty.
Yeah, it does seem.
Mild.
Is there a, is there a bulleted list of what needs to happen to our existing? Rules and regs to qualify.
I think the only thing is that the current administrator of in Vermont of the C L G program doesn't 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 want, yeah, doesn't want. In in the municipal's land use regs to say like. These historic, you know, regulations and restrictions are just piggybacking off the national. Yeah. So we could skip, that's a good segue, I think, to the question number two, which is, do you think our current? You know, historic historic regulations should be tied to the National Register of Historic District listings? And, you know, because of, because I'll go first and and just reiterate that. Because to me, it seems like the C L G program just has benefits with no detriment. And, you know.
I agree with you, but it sounds good.
And there's in order, at least with the current administrator of that, you know, pretty strict opinion that. That the way we're doing it now, because of what I just said, won't fly. My answer would be, no, I do not think that our historic preservation regulations should be tied to the National Register of Historic.
So Stephen, in the the wording of the question two is, are you, do you think, I'm assuming that's, do you think that our design review district should be tied to the National Register? I'm assuming that the term design review district is really referring to the first question where. Sue was saying our historic resource overlay is actually a design review district. So you could substitute, do you think our historic resource?
Okay. Yeah.
So that's a no. For.
That's what that's what I think. I mean, based off of everything the other commissioners have heard. And, you know, seen in past memos and know about, you know, the implications of having that tied, you know, what do what do other commissioners think? Or ask questions?
And.
I think I want to learn more about the H R O, I think, so I've got nothing useful, sorry.
I think for the the word tied here might be better understood, I guess, as maybe conflated. With rather than tied to. Because they're they're sort of made equivalent, like a change in one. Well, I guess it would only flow in one direction, but that if a new National Register district were created, say, around the Astiorgon area. For example, that in theory. That this was the state architectural historians' understanding or interpretation of how we wrote our regulations. That that was bring that into the H R O immediately. Be because it's a N R H P listed district. So I I think that there's a way, at least my interpretation of how we do our regs. I I believe there's a pretty quick and easy way, so to speak, of just changing the language, even if it still references for. Districts that are equivalent to N R H P districts that we can. A boundary description of these four districts and don't mention the N R H P specifically as being the defining.
And the key is to run this by the Vermont guy, right? Because all of this really is just to make him happy. And I'm not saying that trivially, I'm just saying that he's the ultimate judge of whether or not we've met the requirements for the C O T. Okay, is that a valid A R then? Casp? Sorry, that's an old old term.
And I think it is more than just this this one person. I think I've heard, you know, reference and in that confirm that that there's this broader national observation that it's not. In people's opinions, not good policy when municipalities.
But he's a guy that asked.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's that's something we can take out of this discussion and say, okay, staff will look at what it would take to remove the. Legal, I don't know the right term, the legal connection between the National Historic Register and the overlay, right?
I mean, we certainly can, and, you know, I just wanted to, I mean, to be honest, it took me a while too over the past years when we brought up this historic topic. You know, to get a decent understanding of it, so. I understand if some other people don't yet. And sometimes it's, you know, what's easier than just having an open discussion at a meeting is like. Me talking to staff and then coming up with a proposed document and plan that then we just actually look at and like vote on.
Yeah, there's a fine balance. Too much and then not getting any.
Yeah, but this is. As Steve said, very, you know, high level, trying to provide direction.
So number three, you've also addressed previously as well, right? Which is that you feel like. Overlay districts, sorry, design review districts should not correspond to historic character.
Well, yeah, do you feel that our current H R O. Corresponds to historic character areas of the town? I mean, I would say for the reason you said when you you came from Phoenix and saw that, you know, most neighborhoods around here look. Historic and old, I mean, you know, there's all these neighborhoods just north of downtown and west of downtown where. They're just as old.
Yeah, to me, everything's old.
These other two neighborhoods, but they have incredible, you know, architectural features and they have a story to tell just as much. As in, you know, there's some some rationale that that these two, the Horton Homestead and the Clark Canal districts. You know, they weren't added necessarily because of some really objective like this is that these are the most important third and fourth districts to protect. But it was different interested property owners who could get the tax credits. By being, you know, commercial or, you know, like they rented, they rented enough apartments and in buildings that they owned in those. Those prospective districts in order to get tax incentives. And so they were champions for these districts.
Yeah, see, in Phoenix, it was really simple. You had to be fifty years ago, you know, blah, blah, blah. This this to me is more complicated and like you say, there has to be a story to tell that is sort of genius for a particular area, right?
Yeah, and to me, it's clear for the West Brattleboro Village and the and the downtown, but for the other two it isn't. So I feel like the H R O doesn't, you know, correspond very well to the historic character areas of the town. And I feel like if if a historic preservation committee gets created in Brattleboro, that they could be the ones to really, you know, spend time to to hem this out.
Okay.
I see Dan's hand. Dan, let's hear from you.
Yeah, I I think what we're, the bottom line is that we want to kind of move toward the. More clarity and lack or preventing sort of freehand interpretations of these districts, whatever they are. If you do a quick search, I put a link on the in the chat there of what a observer from the from either Brattleboro or anywhere might find. There's historic places that I think do correspond to those districts. And, you know, there's on Canal Street and so forth. And then there there are districts that are identified that probably, I think, fit those those. Geographical boundaries that the town has in the overlay districts. But I I, the reason I'm emphasizing the interpretation and clarifying it is that. These districts, whatever they are, do have have an impact, I think, as Tom's getting into on things like housing development. And so I think we we do need to move in the direction of clarifying. And so I think we, we do need to move in the direction of clarifying it, that's all. I'm, we're not going to do that today, but, you know, someone either looking to purchase a property or what have you, should have clarity on what, what this all means about what, what properties are there. But it is pretty unclear, you know, if you, if you do a quick search, Wikipedia has a list of historic places in Brattleboro and Wyndham County. You know, there's all kinds of information out there that someone might think, oh, this is a historic district, like recognized.
I actually agree with Dan actually, because again, you know, having lived in a historic district, there's consequences to mine there, right? Can't change front facade, you can't make, you know, go above certain elevation because of effects, blah, blah, blah. This to me seems like something where it's appropriate for a person, maybe staff, you know, to say, I'm going to make a suggestion as to what the different kinds of districts we can have are. And here is maybe a first pass at how we distinguish between them or how we describe them. And then bring it to the, bring it to the planning commission and the planning commission can provide input and, you know, understand it and all the rest. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
It's very hard to create something from, you know, no start, right? This, this is a place where we have to have a seat, in my opinion. And I actually agree with Dan that it probably needs clarity.
Yeah, and I think, I think Steph could do that, but, and, but they could do it more easily if somehow we, you know, if, if we can answer these questions.
Is that, is that a reasonable request, Steve?
So that was essentially, if we were to come with, say, alternatives of, here's what it would be like to have this type of district, so I guess there's three by statute. This is what would be able to happen in this type of district. So say we, we look at Clark Canal and we look at the differences in the statutory definition for local historic district, designer view district, overlay district, or I suppose no district. And have maybe a sort of comparison table.
Yeah.
And to be effective, what those three should not have overlapping definitions, right? In other words, there should be no ambiguity whether it goes into District A or District B. They should be clear that it goes, if it fits this definition, it goes into this district. If it fits that definition, it goes into that district.
Yeah, but there is overlap between the three, certainly, because like all three can be used for historic, you know, and, and the overlay district can use a bunch of the, the, you know, the required restrictions.
So then maybe there's a, maybe there's an additional piece of that definition. It's a recommendation that says under these conditions, although it could fit into either one, put it into this one. Again, just a point being that it's clarity and we don't have the same discussion, you know, five years from now or somebody's going, I don't understand why this is this and that's that.
Yeah. I think that'd be helpful. One thing though, that just as far as the overall, you know, format of the land use regs, I, I personally have the proclivity not to make it overly complex. So just because sometimes these, these different types of designations and overlays and districts exist, doesn't, you know, I don't feel like, you know, we shouldn't necessarily try to have all of them. But I think it would be very helpful to see these three, as you guys are saying, to see these three types of districts and, you know, staff's best, best try at, you know, the pros and cons of each and, you know, what each one, the implications of each one and how, how each of those three types can best.
By the way, I don't personally think we have to have three, right? It's whatever staff decides to make a recommendation to us initially, then we can have the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then, yeah, and then I just want to hear from everyone, because we have talked at previous meetings and at the last meeting, you know, the DRC was advocating for the CLG and the Historic Preservation Committee. You know, we, we will be the ultimate deciders of things that they, some of the things that, that that committee would recommend, but I just want to know, do people feel that it'd be a good path forward to endorse that, that, that path? That CLG program and the formation of a Historic Preservation Committee for them to, you know, further Brattleboro's historic preservation, you know, resources and, and districts and such?
I do think that it, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please.
I do think it's useful, I think especially in the context of Brattleboro needing additional housing and perhaps consequential development related to that housing in the very near future that really should have already occurred, that it makes sense for us to be thinking about historic preservation because of the possible stressors being put on maybe some historic properties.
Okay. I think the Historic Preservation Committee should have the same startup guidelines, if you will, that we're describing for the districts. In other words, the Historic Preservation Committee, if we have multiple districts and we have definitions for each one, should understand where their boundaries are. Does that make sense?
The boundaries as far as what can be done with the...
What they address.
What they address, yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful for them too, I think. Yeah, yeah, because they'll have staff as well and they'll be asking them all sorts of questions about the extents of their powers and, yeah.
Do they recommend for a design review district, right? Or do they just stick to the historic district, for example?
Tom, I'd like, I'd like to recommend we move on to the next item.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. But I'd like to talk about the demo delay too, because that was something that, that the DRC recommended. And that's, that's something that, they recommended that at the last meeting. And that's something that, you know, is, is again solely within our land use regs in, in the current section and it could maybe be filled out or clarified or removed. I mean, I want to hear people's, I know not everyone was here at that last meeting, but people's impressions. I mean, Sue asked this question, you know, what are your thoughts on demolition delay? What do you like? What are your concerns? And what's the best way to identify properties subject to demo delay, like age, inventory, you know, one-off prop? Could one, you know, individual properties be subject or would it be dependent upon, you know, being in an area or a neighborhood? Thoughts?
We had demo delay and, and it was quite punitive because I'm, I'm not sure if Brattleboro was ever going to get as nasty as Phoenix was in terms of development, but you'd have guys coming in overnight and demoing stuff. So it, it had to be very strict and punitive, frankly.
Yeah. The commissioners have any thoughts at this time? Other commissioners on the demo delay aspects?
I think it's something definitely to consider, but, you know, to our new commissioner's point, I highly doubt we're going to, you know, have developers coming in overnight and trying to do those types of things. But I guess it maybe doesn't hurt to explore what that would look like.
It doesn't seem like that kind of place, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that's another thing that, you know, we could push off to the Historic Preservation Committee to really look into more and fill out. But yeah, to Dan's point, and it's 7:40, this is a kind of tough subject, especially trying to answer these things. So I think we, you know, we, we did a little exploration of them and we'll see, we'll see what we can come up with for a future meeting. Moving on, the bicycle parking standards. So at, we've had two meetings now where this Jonathan Weber, a representative of this Vermont organization, Local Motion, has come in and presented on suggestions, a review of our current bicycle parking standards in our land use regs and at the last meeting presented a proposal dealing with, you know, purpose statement and how to design racks and their layouts and what would be required for different land use types, short-term parking land, long-term parking and amenities. And all this came to us because this organization in Brattleboro, BCAT, for active transportation, connected us and, and wanted us to move forward with this. So I thought it was worthwhile. And at this meeting, we gave some feedback and thoughts at the last meeting and staff provided for this meeting their opinions and, you know, version, incorporating some of Jonathan's proposal, but, and providing some alternatives. And so Steve, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add beyond the document that was provided.
Sure, I can be sure to be brief and my apologies for the really odd marginalia there. I didn't know that was actually coming into the PDF. But yeah, you have play-by-play of every formatting change that was made. So basically what I've done is taken, following the feedback from the previous meeting, the pieces of the recommendations that Jonathan made that seemed to be well-supported and woven them into the existing section that we have for parking, which is Section 313, that at the moment is exclusive to automobile parking, but I think the thought here is that we could be addressing multiple nodes with that section rather than having it exist separately. So primarily, that is what's going on there. However, one of the action items, I would say, is there are a few pages in this memo that have a table, which was my attempt at bringing in what it would look like if we were adding the bicycle parking minimums to the existing parking minimums table. And so what you've got for the first two columns is exactly what it is right now in that, in that table that you find in our parking section. The third column says minimum bicycle parking based on existing car parking ratios is what I've come up with to, presuming that we consider our existing parking minimums rational and useful and desired, which I know we've had some recent conversation about. Setting that aside for a minute, if we, if we presume that, this is what we would be equating if we were going to require, you know, treating the car and the bike both as a personal vehicle that requires some area of storage. To my understanding, this is equal in essentially what it is requiring, because all of the racks that Jonathan included have two spaces to them, so there's no way to get one space. So essentially, we've just turned one space into one rack and everywhere that there is some sort of deviser, it's been a while since I took math. The, the bottom half of the fraction there, whether it be based on the grand gross floor area or the dwelling units or something else, we've doubled that so that it remains the same because essentially one rack equals two spaces. The last column there is essentially Jonathan's recommendations, but I've made some edits to them so that they correspond with the way that we already defined these things. And there were some of our definitions of uses as far as parking is concerned that weren't included in Jonathan's table. And there were some uses that he included that we don't. So what I've tried to do is take what he's given and fit it into our existing categories so that we won't be making any additional change there. The thing that I think is particularly worth flagging, and then I think that's it on this, is that it's, it's critical to have a decision on, I, I suppose regardless of whether there are parking minimums or not. Of course, if, if it was decided that there wouldn't be, then this is sort of moot, although you could go in the direction of having bike parking minimums but not car parking minimums. That's obviously not what's been worn for today. But adding the minimums bicycle parking, if we don't have any kind of language to mitigate this, essentially we'll be doubling our parking minimums. We'll be requiring car parking and then an equivalent amount of bike parking at every development. So I would personally strongly recommend, I don't know that it is a departmental recommendation at this time, not to say that it, it wouldn't be, but that there would be, if, if this was something that was being taken up, that, that the section would be amended for a particular statement so that some portion of each could be considered, so that it would remain the same amount of parking at most. So, you know, whether that's a full sliding scale of 0% car to 100% car, 0% bike to 100% bike, that obviously is, is something for the commission to consider, but I do think it's, it's worth certainly making sure that it's not, in essence, just adding twice as much parking.
Can you speak just broadly to the, like, sections or aspects of Jonathan's proposed language that were removed?
So I think a noteworthy one is that the, the distinction between long-term and short-term parking isn't present in this recommendation. I, I had recalled that there wasn't particularly consensus on having that be something that was required within the land use regs, but certainly if I was misunderstood, that could come back in this. Primarily, virtually every design-related recommendation that he made has been taken up. In, in some cases, what I've done is verbally described what was in the pictures to be included so that we have both. But the few places that were flagged in the previous memo, like there was one particular section on waivers and exemptions, that's been removed except for the piece that talked about in, in the uncertainty of how much needed to be provided, the AO will decide based on this. That's just been incorporated with the same language that we have at the moment, as well as how the DRB would decide more, decide to approve more or less parking based on the applicant's request for them to do so. And then there was one paragraph that we had discussed would likely be a potential liability, where it was saying that these racks installed as per the designs would create a safe environment that was protected from theft. So we removed that paragraph.
Right, we talked about that. All right. I wonder if we can go around and maybe people just offer their, their thoughts on this and their, you know, what they'd like to see changed. And, you know, we won't vote on anything, but then that could be incorporated in a potential, another draft. Unless, you know, the majority say that they're just not interested in this, then there won't be another draft. Can we go around and, and do that? I think that'd be a good way in the remaining time. Someone want to go first? Todd?
Are, Tom, are you talking just about that proposed amendment that's to 24.8? That's it?
Back at the 224, the, the garage bay doors?
Oh, no, I was looking at the pedestrian bicycle construction on there and, and I apologize. I got, I, I saw pedestrian bicycle thing, sucked that and... And I apologize, I saw pedestrian bicycle thing, sucked that, and never mind.
Okay. Yes, I will just start off with a little question. Steve, when, in Jonathan's language, he wrote bike parking shall be at least as convenient as car parking. Was that reflected in this draft or captured with the setbacks?
That was not taken up. I figured that, you know, the purpose of these regulations is to ensure that that's the case, but that having that sort of more or less undefinable.
Right.
Probably statutorily, it doesn't seem like good practice.
Good, yeah, no, I agree. So then with the table that has location standards, all of those are minimums, right? None of them are maximums?
So what I've done in that table with location standards is where the existing graphic that Jonathan included, which was, I think he put it under figure four, I've put it under figure pound sign because we're gonna have to change it if we take this up. Some of them say recommended and some of them say minimum. Some of them don't say either of those things and one of them says preferred. So in any event, when it said nothing or it said minimum, I've put it in the minimum required column. And when it said recommended or preferred, I put it in the preferred column or recommended column, rather. I'm not per se endorsing any of those, but that's just seemingly in feet rather than inches. That's equivalent to what you see in that graphic.
Okay. So I guess, I think what I would like to see is at least for certain of those, some maximums as well. Because, you know, above the table with the location standards, letter B, it says, bicycle parking and/or directional signage leading thereto shall be visible from the main entrance of the structure or facility to the greatest extent possible. You know, greatest extent possible is also a hard-to define thing.
Yeah.
And visible could be, you know, half a mile.
I put that in. I don't think I mentioned that. I put in to the greatest extent feasible for a couple of these because it seemed like otherwise it would be potentially a difficult, inflexible thing that might be bad practice to have. But certainly that could also be reverted if that language is not.
I mean, currently our land use regs for bike parking, you know, can you provide this on the very last page? Have very little, but right now it's, you know, bicycle rack must be within 200 feet of each non-residential entryway. And we discussed at a previous meeting whether that's sufficient or that's too much or if it could be combined with, you know, different entrances. But I feel like there should be some sort of maximum. Instead of just saying, you know, keeping in at greatest extent feasible. So maybe that could be attempted.
If we had a maximum, are you saying that they wouldn't be allowed to have more than that?
Oh, sorry.
Maximum distance you're saying in these?
Yeah, maximum, like, oh, maximum distance. So like the parking needs to be within a certain, within a certain distance from the open.
Oh, okay.
Because right now it's just rack distance from front of building, you know, there's no minimum required. Well, they may put it really close, but they also may just put it, you know, somewhere that's visible. And that could be a quarter mile away if their parcel's that large.
We do that with car parking and it slipped my mind that that's something that probably bears considering. It has to be within a certain distance.
Okay, yeah.
So that seems like it's worth taking.
And then another thought I had is, you know, I definitely, well, so at the last meeting, you know, Jonathan was advocating for it with certain, certain land uses and that are of a certain size. They would require long-term parking, you know, which has certain different requirements than the short-term bike parking. And then if there's enough required long-term parking, then also some amenities would be required, like showers and lockers and changing rooms. And I feel like at the meeting, you know, a lot of us seemed like, yeah, that would be great, but is that like the reality here in Brattleboro with development? Should we?
Who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah, who's gonna pay for that? And that will be an added burden. Jonathan, Jonathan kind of rebutted that a bit by saying like, the cost of long-term, these long-term amenities is a fraction of car parking. I don't know, you know, whether that's true or not, and I don't know the numbers. But to kind of go back on it a little bit, like right now, our regs, and it seems like it's supported by most people, is that for car parking, if a certain amount of spaces are required, then electric car charging facilities are required.
That's in here, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, because it's in the parking section. So I, once again, it kind of feels to me like, you know, giving more, more, more support to the car side of things than the bicycle.
There's a second way to skin that cat.
Is there, yeah. But I feel like if a certain number of bicycle parking is required, then maybe something just like covered bicycle parking would be arguably, you know, necessary or appropriate and valuable to include. But what do people think about that? Some sort of, some sort of cutoff or, you know, requirement for beyond racks? Like there at least is for electric car charging.
To some extent, that was the essence of the long-term versus short-term bicycle parking distinction, right?
Right.
Or different requirements for long-term.
Right, yeah. And I mean, so from last meeting, is anyone still, is anyone in the camp of wanting, you know, along Jonathan's proposal of showers or changing facilities or locker rooms?
Yes.
Yeah?
I also had a.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. One of the items is, it says bicycle parking and there's A, B, C, and it's above a table for the bicycle rack locations. And B says that there is supposed to be directional signage so that people can find the parking. I'm wondering if we don't want to have residential places have to have signage to their parking if it's outdoors. My concern is, is that it's a sign pointing in the direction of something that may be easy to steal. I see the point in commercial locations where people might be arriving and not be familiar, but I don't know if that's necessary at residential locations.
I think it's a good observation, it's a good point.
Like, I don't think, thinking back to when I lived in apartments, I don't know that I would want people to know and be directed to there I was parking my bike.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate something I said at the last meeting when Jonathan was here and I just want to add to it. I was, you know, I'm, and truth be told, I am a cyclist, okay? But I'm also a resourceful cyclist. And we need to talk about this in terms of private transportation and public transportation. There, you know, I would want, as I said in that meeting, I would want the data to support that there is a demand for this type, this level of bicycle parking in, basically in equivalency to car parking. And there's kind of a assumption here that the supply and demand, you know, that if you build, if you build more parking, more people will ride. And that's debatable, but, you know, the expense involved in creating these things kind of demand, creates a perceived demand anyway, that they should be used or then it becomes, I mean, honestly, it becomes a blame game where, well, we built the, we built the bike parking and no one's riding, right? This is a classic problem, this is not new. And in any case, I don't think the type of regulation change that we're talking about is the solution to improving or increasing bike commuting, for example, or recreational riding for that matter either. You know, in any case, I just wanted to emphasize that I would really want to see a V-Trans study or a Brattleboro-sponsored study that says there is X amount of demand for bike parking. I know there is a demand, I know it's not zero, okay? But, you know, before we were to make this kind of change or even move in this direction, I would want the data to support it. And I don't think Jonathan had that. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that there was that kind of data available.
Correct.
Could I jump in? Actually, I have a pin on to Dan's point, which I.
Sure.
I just have two process questions, one of which I hope will echo what Dan said. The first process comment I have is I think that any large recommendation, which I assume this is, should come with some cost analysis. Right? Great idea, but we should know how much it's gonna cost us. And then second, which I believe will support Dan, which I believe is consistent with Dan's point, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, is that in addition to the solution to the problem, there should be some justification for why it is a problem. So that you can take the cost analysis and you can take the justification for why it's a problem or the quantification of the problem, if you will, and say, is it really worth it to solve it the way that we're proposing to solve it? The two ends aren't there, in my opinion. The solution's there, but we don't have the data to make an intelligent decision on how big the problem is and how much it's gonna cost. And I don't think, it's not a direct criticism just of this, I think it should be part of a process when we bring in large recommendations or requirement. So Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, if I didn't understand your point right on the front end.
Oh, that's right. You know, the assumptions behind a proposal like this need to be really just made clear. And part of that would be, okay, we have a problem. What's the data that describes that problem and so forth? So, but just to give an example, I mean, with the two-tiered bicycle rack that is in, is in the memo, and I think that must have come from the local motion materials, which I'm all for this stuff, guys. I mean, you know, if a private developer wants to put this stuff in and, you know, encourage, you know, it's great, it's great stuff, except that we can't, I don't believe it's a reasonable expectation to require it. But one of those two-tiered bike racks, I mean, that's, first of all, it's an expensive proposition, it's a risky proposition. You know, there are all kinds of physical limitations. So that's why, again, I would want to put this in the context of private transportation. These are all cars and bikes are private modes of transportation versus public transportation, which really, we should be having that discussion, okay? Public transportation with, let's say, even buses that have bike racks on them and so forth, which we do have. You know, that should be part of this conversation to look at the whole system. Because I, you know, again, I think it would, I'll be very frank, I think it would be a lot of wasted money if you started to require, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't encourage many people unless maybe you had a cultural shift where, you know, the demand is there, right? But I don't see that happening anytime soon, unfortunately.
Okay. I want to float the idea and get people's opinions, because in previous meetings, we talked a bit about removing the requirement for a minimum amount of automobile parking. And it seemed like at that meeting or two, the majority of commissioners, correct me if I'm incorrect, liked that idea of removing the requirement. What about leaving the requirement but allowing an interchange of the developer having the choice of meeting that minimum with either automobile or bicycle parking? Is that?
I think that's an interesting compromise.
I'm not a bike commuter, so I don't have no intuitive feeling for this. I recreate on a bike, that's it. I would like, I'd like to see the data that says, I mean, I think it's a very interesting idea. I'd just like to see the data that says you can do that, right? In other words, people will have the option of either biking or car. And they'll choose biking if they have a bike spot but don't have a car spot, if that makes sense.
What do you mean, the data, like, will people actually utilize that allowance?
Yeah, will that have an effect? Will people say, no, I'm just trying to think of it, like, screw it, they don't have car spots, car spots. There's no value in having bike spots as an alternative to car spots. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm trying to, again, I don't intuitively understand this because I'm not a bike commuter. So maybe I don't really understand it, but maybe I don't really understand the trade-off that a human being would make. But I would think if you're a car driver, you're gonna drive a car, and the fact that there's a bike spot there in place of a car isn't gonna make you all of a sudden buy a bike and ride a bike.
Right, yeah, I think the rationale.
I don't do that.
Yeah, it may just, it may just make life easier for people who already want to or are on the fence about bicycling.
Go ahead.
But I will say, you know, as far, I'm with the, you know, y'all who have advocated for more data and more analysis, and I'd like to see it too, but I'll just add a little bit, and it's not necessarily refuting that, but that I think a lot of our elements of our land use regs were put into place without that data as well. The car parking, I don't think had that data, but it's become canon, you know, in a lot of places with just these arbitrary numbers. And.
And I'm gonna, I think you have a really, I think that's a really interesting idea, the trade-off idea.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know. It's the bottom line for me personally.
And there is the risk of just, if we didn't look at the bike parking and we just went the route, which it seemed like maybe we were going of eliminating the minimum or eliminating the requirement for minimum automobile parking, that that would cause, I don't, you know, I don't have necessarily a pulse on the public and the select board and DPW and other groups, but maybe they would feel like, no, you know, this is gonna result in, you know, not very well-thought-out developments and a spillover of cars onto the streets. And whether that is how things would pan out in reality or not, I don't know.
But I think it was B, wasn't it, in the meeting?
B.
In the historical, she came in for the historical.
Maya, Norma.
Maybe. Regardless, she said she was 77 and she doesn't ride a bicycle.
Maya, yeah.
And so I don't know how many people there are like that.
Yeah, I know Steve's definitely, you know, he's looked into eliminating minimum car parking quite a bit.
And just for the sake of, I guess, the full spectrum, there was sort of a half-baked suggestion of a different approach that could possibly get towards the same public goods without necessarily the externalities of the changes to our regulation that might come from making a minimum parking requirement for either or both modes of transportation. And that suggestion was that in lieu of, or I suppose also could be considered in conjunction with this, in lieu of taking up minimums for bike parking, that downtown, and this, it was suggested for downtown because of the difficulty with space that seemed particularly critical. And that's why we already don't have car parking minimums downtown. This could be looked at in a broader scope than downtown. But there was the suggestion that we could look into what we have for the public realm, particularly with on-street existing car parking spaces in order to, you know, do this as a study for, in a public outreach type engagement to find where the actual demand is and then provide that in a public process that's comprehensive in that way and repurpose our existing public realm away from that one use, which is car storage, perhaps towards bike storage, perhaps towards wider sidewalks, what have you. But that is also a way to try to get that increase in bike parking, if that's a goal that is desirable. But without using these minimums as the lever that gets pulled to do so.
All right. I realize we're over time. Um, any, any closing thoughts? I mean, maybe, maybe high-level stuff, I, I think like I was kind of addressing about, you know, people's thoughts on, 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 like, like we talked about in previous meetings, maybe eliminating car minimums or do people wanna keep it and do a hybrid? Or do we want both the car and the bicycle minimums? Can people answer that now? Feel comfortable answering that now? Yep, Todd?
Right ahead here. Uh, I, it got my mind changed a couple of minutes ago about the car minimums. I remain, um, thinking that'd be a great idea. I kinda feel like getting rid of those minimums, that it would work itself out organically, that there might be some pain in the butt about it, but I think that it would take care of itself. And if, and if it got crazy, that we could address it, that, but anyways, those were my thoughts on that issue.
So, so what I heard is that you think, um, it's worth trying removing the automobile minimums and things will, um, you know, work themselves out or, or, or for the most part, or if not, then they can be addressed?
Yeah.
Yeah. What about the bicycle minimum proposal though?
You know, that's, I, I hate to, um, be a ditto about data, but I just don't know anything about that. Uh, you know, I'd love to see some, some info and after this, I might Google up some info on how other, um, townships and cities handled it, so, but, um, I'll be curious to see what the folks think, for sure.
All right. Yeah, can we get those two aspects, um, addressed by the other commissioners too? Dan?
Uh, Tom, I'm sorry, I'm really gonna have to get going in three minutes, uh, but I just wanted, I just wanted to add something that might be salient, that maybe Steve could look into for, cause I, I would like to continue this conversation. One big difference also with bike and car parking is that downtown, we have parking meters. And Steve, I don't know if there is such a thing as parking meters for bikes, uh, but, uh, essentially that is, you know, the model for high, let's say, high density or, you know, uh, parking needs is that people are willing to pay for it. And, uh, so, you know, uh, I just wanna put that out there as, you know, a component of this that, again, you know, you, if you're requiring private space or even public space to be used, it, 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 there are costs involved and, uh, and it's a, you're, you have a lot of assumed behaviors, uh, involved, and, uh, one of those is willingness to pay for it. So anyway, I just wanna put that out there. I really, I'm gonna, I, I wanna leave room, I wanna hear what other people have to say, but I am gonna have to leave at eight fifteen, sorry.
Okay. Well, you've definitely expressed the, the need for more, um, more info or, you know, some, some study or justification if any bike parking minimums were to be put into place, so I captured that for you. Uh, Lindsay? I think Sarah may be done, I don't know. She had to leave.
Yeah, Sarah had to leave at eight.
Okay.
Um, I think that all of these things are worth considering and pursuing. Um, it's hard for me to imagine there being bike parking meters, and that sounds kind of horrifying to me, but, um, uh, I think that, uh, I'm not really concerned about the data, I'm concerned about incentivizing people to ride bikes, because as a town, I think we wanna be a place where people ride bikes. And if we have the infrastructure to do that, then I would like to see that happen in new developments.
And the, um, the automobile minimums?
I still like the idea of, of removing them, um, but I also, um, am a mentor to your idea of maybe there's a compromise of having it be one or the other, or there being some sort of exchange.
Okay. Dan, can, can you speak to the automobile minimums? I didn't, I didn't get that from you. Or do you wanna hold out?
I, I would like to continue talking about it, but essentially I'm, I'm more on the side of, uh, keeping them. But I, I do need to go, I'm sorry. But you guys have a good night, okay?
Thank you. Yeah. Sorry for, I was running over. These have been, uh, some challenging agenda items I found. Pretty, pretty high level and.
Good discussion.
Yeah. Um, John, you're up.
No, I, I just had the two points, the two things I wanted to make was one, the, the data really of the problem and the cost.
Yeah.
I, I think there's another issue honestly that's come up, and it's not an issue to discuss tonight, but I, I think, I look at it as solving a problem, and there's clearly people in the community that look at it as incentivizing or perhaps pushing additional bike use. And if, if it's the latter, then the conditions are changed for the analysis, right?
What do you think about the, um, the automobile parking minimums? And should we have minimums or should we remove them but allow developers?
My concern with the parking minimums, quite honestly, like relating to downtown, because I wanna make sure that people that come into downtown to shop have plenty of parking so that they don't say, screw this, I'm gonna go somewhere else.
So the downtown parking, uh, is exempt from the minimums? But, but the public?
I don't have an opinion on that.
The public provides, okay.
I, I have a driveway personally.
Yeah.
Um, so it doesn't impact, impact me.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the data that says, okay, we have so many people parking on the street apparently and, and all the rest. I mean, I can see cars on the street, but it doesn't seem to be a huge problem. That's the problem, you know, again, if you don't intuitively have a understanding of this, you've gotta see the data to say, okay, what, what's the real problem?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to avoid your question.
No, no.
I just feel like I can answer.
I think that's valid. Um, and, and what's mine? I mean, I was definitely in the camp of removing the automobile minimums and just allowing the actual, you know, person who owns the property and is developing the property and knows it intimately to decide, um, how little they need, um, or what's efficient. But then I also do feel that some, that more bike parking is needed than is currently being provided, but I am sensitive to the aspect of, um, having, um, you know, redundancy or, um, facilities that aren't gonna be used very much. And so I feel like a, a careful approach is to, you know, is what I, what I suggested earlier is to, um, allow developers to, um, to retain the automobile minimums, but integrate in that they can be substituted, you know, equally for the bicycle.
It's a creative idea.
Unfortunately, it's like, do we do that in late forty years to see how, to see the implications? You know, that's a long time. But if the bike parking costs a whole lot less than the automobile parking, um, to, to implement and to build out, then it could, you know, it could happen rapidly if there is actual, you know, developers and property owners believe that, um, to the extent that, that renovations and.
Then you have, then you have the incentives aligned, right?
Yeah.
It's cheaper for developers to build bike parking, so we encourage people.
Yeah.
To, to use bikes more because they don't have as many parking spaces theoretically.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then if they, if we weren't considering bike parking and we were just removing automobile minimum, parking minimums, then that difference between what our current minimums require and what actually on-the-ground developers might have less, less of, that minimum, and if bike parking's cheaper, they could just put some bike parking to fill that gap, even if it's not used, it would be a, um, a cheaper development incentive. I hope that was clear. Um, so that's, that's mine. We didn't really have a vote or anything, but captured, um, people's perspectives to some degree and we'll revisit this stuff again. Twenty minutes over, uh, we need to have our official public comment period. Here it is, there's no members of the public, so.
Motion to adjourn.
We don't need it, we finished our business arguably, so adjourn us.
I'm moving.
Thanks everyone for staying on.
Thanks, have a good week.
Likewise. Happy holidays.